If that is, if everyone is all set, I'd like to call this meeting to order. As we did last time, we're going to start as normal with the Pledge of Allegiance, which you should see on your screen, the flag. While we do this for the sake of ease and so we don't have a thousand pledges coming at us at different times, please mute your own sound and please rise and speak in the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Rise if you're able, of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please take a moment to, as we always do, have a moment of silence for those who we've lost, which has been a lot of really, really great people, in particular this month, as well as other months. So moment of silence, please. Thank you. Let us resume the meeting. Marie, if you don't mind, can you please give us a roll call and then I will go over online etiquette reminders as we do meetings.
Mayor Allen.
I am here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
I'm here.
Trustee Lewis.
I'm here.
Trustee Marpy. Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Pine.
Yeah.
Attorney Gilchrist and Attorney Engle.
Dave Engel is here.
And Dave is here. Wonderful. All present. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We went over this last time, but just as a quick review to facilitate everything runs as smoothly as possible. We're asking you to mute your audio unless when you're not speaking, so primarily it should be muted. Some of you who have keyboards have the option to hit spacebar and hold spacebar and it will unmute you. So you have that, some of you don't. You're encouraged to use headphones so that there isn't a feedback loop between what you're speaking and what we're hearing from your speakers. And if two or more of you are watching the meeting in the same room, please make sure that only one person's audio is on. Jim Herbert apparently raised his hand. Jim, are you here and want to say something or just saying hi?
Just saying hi.
Hi, Jim. We have Jim here. I know we have Neil here. I know we have Mark here from the village. Thank you. And we will be monitoring chat as well. Okay, as a reminder for public hearing, same thing as last time during a public hearing, we will open up for anyone to speak. The first time you speak, please state your full name and your street address, which is customary for all of our normal public meetings. If you speak at other times in the meeting, just restate your name, please. The first people to be heard section should be specific to, I'm sorry, it shouldn't say the tentative budget, it should say the introduction of local law number one. So my apologies on that, which I'll put up on the screen in a moment when we have entertained a motion to open the public hearing. We will open the floor multiple times during the meeting, including after my mayor updates. So we'll have other opportunities to speak on other things if not specific to the local law number one. And remember, if you're not speaking, please mute your audio. Thanks. All right, before we do announcements, I would like to entertain a motion to open up a public hearing for introduction of local law number one of 2020.
Motion.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Vanessa. Let me get the local law up on the page here. So now we have online here. New share. So on the village webpage, which I think you guys will now see the local law introductory, local law number one of the year 2020. This is available on the village webpage. Andy, do you want to speak briefly on anything?
This is fairly straightforward. There is a new New York State Building Code and Energy Conservation Construction Code, and this would formally adopt that by the village for the building department to apply and enforce.
And Mark, do you want to share anything or say anything about this, in particular, both as the code enforcement officer and as the town supervisor? Because I feel like the town has already done this.
Not really. It's something we really don't have a choice in. We need to do it because the state has decided to go back to using their own code.
Okay. So as a reminder, with public hearings, we'll open it for a minimum of 30 minutes. And then we'll close it and that will complete the introduction part of a local law. Andy, would we be able to vote on it this meeting or would we wait until next meeting?
No, you're going to be able, once the public hearing has been held and closed, you're able to act on it.
Okay, and we do have the public hearing open right now, correct?
Excuse me?
We do have the public hearing open right now?
That's correct.
Okay, so at this point, oh, I'm sorry, Mark, you were saying?
No, I was just, I was just going to say, I am supposed to, that's what's going to affect today, so.
Okay, so ideally, we are voting on this today. Okay, the public hearing is open. If anyone would like to speak on this, please unmute your microphone and speak your name and address and share whatever you would like. Give a few more seconds in case anybody is tripping over their controls. It's kind of a pretty straightforward thing, so I'm not really expecting many comments. All right, hearing none. It will remain open, so if you do want to speak up, I'll give you some other opportunities to do that as well. And we'll have some more opportunities to share throughout. Okay, let me go back to the.
Excuse me, Rob.
Yes, Ben.
Do we need to vote on that? I know we, I know we did a motion in a second, but I don't believe we voted on that. Do we have to vote on that? For the public hearing?
Do we not vote on opening the public hearing?
And I suggest let's make the record clear.
Sorry about that.
On that motion. Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
All right, we have it. Motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. This is officially open, officially, officially. Okay. Again, if you have a question or comment, please speak up. In the meantime, we're going to resume our normal meeting activities and we'll give you a couple more opportunities later to do this. Just as a fun aside, if you have seen me on the screen, I brought a hat in case the glare of my head was screwing up the video. So this is clearly a bald person problem, but if you guys prefer the hat, just say so. I'm here for you. All right, couple announcements. Village elections have been postponed by the governor's executive order until September 15th of 2020, until after September 15th. So more information on that as we get it. The street sweeping has been completed. Thank you to Neil and his crew who have gone through, and I think there's some information in the reports about going through it two or three times and having to work around the weather and people who didn't want to move their vehicles. But thank you guys for doing that. And also, the paving work on Lyman Street, Lower John Superior and Water Streets have been complete. I did ask Neil to send me a couple pictures. So here is some of the pictures of the new paving in this area where the sewer project had significant work. And I know that this was a significant headache for a lot of people. So thank you for everyone's patience down there. And I'm really glad that Neil has been down there and on site a lot. He's been hearing concerns from people. And he's been doing some things to make sure the water flows well. And it looks really, really nice. Neil, trustees, anybody want to comment on that or are we good on this point for right now?
Yeah, I just want to comment. I actually was out for a walk on the Greenway and went down that section the other day and I saw Rocky Odell, who was on our last Zoom meeting complaining about it. And he said, I went from the worst street in the village to the best street in the village.
That's great.
So very happy.
Outstanding, outstanding.
Great job. Yeah, it looks really good.
Great. All right, mayor updates. The phone system, we had some significant issues and weird things. We do have the network for the internet for the phone up and running. The wire cabinet is all installed back there in the corner in the office. We have everything, phones on both the police and village side ready to go. We actually have them working on a different number, but the new phones are set and ready. What we're waiting on now, here's one of the new phones that I just dropped. What we have going on right now is we're simply waiting for the switch over to go from the current company to the new company. And that's taking a little bit of time because we've had a little bit of issues on the paperwork side. But we should be up and running in the next couple of weeks, assuming there are no more weird quirky issues. But Jackie, who's been helping us with this, did say that this is kind of a common thing where there will be some hiccups as we wait for the switch over. In the meantime, our phone system is currently still working, except mine is not. My phone died and my phone mailbox is not working. So if you're trying to reach me, your best bet is to email me or go through the village office and they will send messages to me, which has been happening as well. So my apologies for those of you who've had to go that route. We have had some weird server issues and I had hoped to have some quotes for a new server here for our village building, which houses all of the, all of our documents and all the software that we use is backed up there. We are at it sort of a general standstill of good things are working for the most part. But it has been very quirky. It has been, we've had problems and the only consistency is that all of the problems are inconsistent and they just kind of take turns coming up. So I spoke with Denise about using some of our funds in contingency from this budget year that we haven't spent on getting a new server. The server we have is currently is probably six or more years old. It was done in a way that was inexpensive, which is an advantage. But the problem is if you have a technical error, you can't just go online and say, I have this server with these components because it's kind of a hand-built one. And that's sort of the problem we're having. So I do want to purchase a new server and have it installed. But we do have our backups finally established and up and running. Marie, do you have anything else to update on the computer issues we've had in the office?
No, I think everything's running well and using the remote sites or the laptops is, I think everybody's got that under control too. So we're doing okay.
But we had like, what, two or three weeks where the things were just being really strange and it was around the same time we were starting to get water bills in?
Totally, exactly the same time. And yes, we couldn't get into the water. It would take many, many tries to get in and you'd have to, you know, knock off the whole system and come back in. It would drop you in the middle of putting water bills in. So, but it has been better.
And we had, we did have a couple tech supports. I'll look into it. One of them, who he just knows his stuff like crazy, said he has, could not figure out the problem and the company themselves said, we've never seen this before. We have no idea what the problem is. So in my mind, that was sort of time to think about a new server so that we can get things smooth and operating and sort of get that squared away. Trustees, any thoughts on that? It's probably going to be with installation anywhere from a $2,000 to $4,000 investment. But I'll have more information when I have quotes for you.
You did say that Denise said we have money available?
Yes, we have unspent contingency money from this current fiscal year that we have not spent. And I think we also have a little bit of funds left over in that sort of line item for sort of office and net computerish improvements. I forget exactly what line that is. Not nearly enough to cover it. We would also be using our contingency, but we do have the funds for it. Denise, did you ever get on? Does not sound like it's. All right, I'll shoot her a text and find out if we can get more updates from her, but I just want to make you guys aware of that. Second update, we're going to pass it over to attorney Dave Engel. So Dave, if you would speak on what this update is, and I will pin you so we can all see your lovely face. Where are you, Dave? Dave, are you on right now?
I'm on.
All right. Are you on via phone?
I'm on via Zoom.
Oh, well, I'll find you in a minute. You keep, you, please give us an update on bringing in Sterling Environmental.
Okay. As you will all recall, the village entered into a consent order along with Honeywell with respect to the landfill. The landfill is a state listed hazardous waste site. And under that order, certain tasks have to be completed. The first major task that has to be completed is the preparation of a work plan for a medial investigation and feasibility study. And pursuant to the agreement we have in place with Honeywell, Honeywell is taking the lead through their consultant ERM to prepare those documents. You will also recall that the Hartford Insurance Company has been covering the costs associated with my legal representation of the village in this matter. Hartford has now agreed to bear the costs for the village to retain its own engineering firm to review the work that Honeywell's engineering firm is doing. It was our feeling that we needed to have our own expertise involved in this process and our own experts putting their eyes on Honeywell's document. So to that end, we recommended that Sterling Environmental, Sterling Environmental Engineering be retained for that purpose. Sterling prepared a proposal that was provided to Hartford together with a proposed budget. Hartford signed off on it. And now the proposal has gone to the village and it's my understanding that the board will be considering approving the retention of Sterling Environmental for that purpose this evening. Sterling brings to this task vast expertise. Mark Millsbaugh, who's the principal at Sterling, who will be heading up the effort, has been working in this field for about 40 years and is about as good as there is in terms of evaluating work plans for hazardous waste site investigations and proposed remedial options. So we look forward to having him involved as part of the team.
All right, great. Thank you, Dave. And again, it's been great to have the Hartford being so helpful as our insurance company and offering, not offering, we'll be covering the cost of this as part of the insurance situation coverage. Trustees, do you have any questions before I put up the resolution for Dave?
Do we have a cost of what they're going to, it's going to be?
The cost was in the, on the order of about $10,000. I think it might have been a little bit less than that. As I say, that proposed budget was provided to Hartford. Hartford approved of that budget and indicated that it will be covering those costs.
Okay.
Hey, Rob, if you want to scroll down on the resolution, Mark's agreement with his budget is attached to it.
Ah, great.
Precise information, always better than.
There we go.
Can you guys see that and read that? Okay. Probably zoom in a bit. Is that better?
Yeah, I can actually read it now.
All right. All right. So if it's okay, I'm going to scroll up and quickly review the resolution. Or, no, we have that on for later. We can, we can wait until later if that's okay, but that was sort of what we're doing with this. Did you have any questions for Dave? Do you guys want to introduce this resolution now or do you want to wait until later in the meeting?
Why not get it out of the way?
Okay.
That way you can get me out of the way.
All right, with that in mind, I'm trying to find where we had this resolution. We have this resolution at the very bottom of page two and top of page three in the agenda. So what I will do is I will quickly review. This is the resolution approving professional service agreements. We don't need to go through everything listed here. And, but it does specify locations, the sites and so on and so forth. Do you want me to go right to therefore be resolved, Andy?
Sure. And in general, just be aware that this is specific to the current landfill remedial effort under the DEC consent order. It does acknowledge that there is a separate agreement with Honeywell. Honeywell will take the lead on the RIFS, but that the board does think it's in the village's best interest to retain their own expert environmental consultant to review that work before it's submitted to DEC. And that the Hartford has reviewed this and that Sterling will be invoicing Hartford directly for the services. And with that, you can go right to the body of the resolution, Rob.
All right, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesick Falls in regular session duly convened as follows. One, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesick Falls hereby approves professional services proposal submitted by Sterling Environmental Engineering PC for services as described here and above and as set forth in the letter attached here to as exhibit A and made a part hereof and further hereby authorizes the mayor of the Village of Huesick Falls to execute such professional service agreements on behalf of the Village of Huesick Falls, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in exhibit A here to, it being further understood and agreed that Sterling Environmental Engineering shall invoice Hartford Insurance Company directly for payment of such professional services as herein above described. I am looking for someone to offer the resolution.
Motion.
Thank you, Kevin. And looking for a second, second Bobby. This is up for roll call vote, please, Marie.
Trustee Pine.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Marpy.
Yes.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Marie. Thank you, Dave. Any other questions for Dave?
Good night. Good evening, everyone. I'll be talking probably next month.
All right, great. Thank you, Dave.
Bye bye.
Okay, resuming back to the meeting here. Final update, COVID-19. There's not a lot that has changed. The state is starting to open up as the governor has set forth several areas across New York State and have to hit, I think, a list of seven different things for them to open up. Some areas are starting to open up, western and northern New York areas primarily. Some areas are not. We are part of the capital region area, which is, I want to say about six counties. There's a lot of things we would have to hit and I think it's going to be a while before we hit that threshold. Again, I'm bringing up county leadership because Executive McLaughlin and the county officials have really been on top of things. They've been open with daily Facebook updates. They've had meetings with the various village and town leaders in the county. The general consensus is that we want to be opening up in some form, in some small controlled, simple form. My only personal concern is that we as a rural area are just not being exposed to this virus like many of the more populated areas are. I think that we will eventually open up in some smaller form, although I think things will always be different for the next half a year, year and so on. But the one thing I want to stress is that we need to see more people wearing masks in social settings. I have seen a lot of people out there wearing masks. I have seen a lot of people intentionally doing social distancing. And I know that, you know, some people will be walking together with families and loved ones and you're kind of, you're doing that sort of together. I understand that. But I still want to see more people wearing masks when they're out. I want to see more people being conscious. And it's the summer is approaching. It's the nice weather. We're going to want to relax. And I think that there is going to be a time several months from now where it is really going to come into these rural areas like Huesick Falls. And that is the thing I'm most worried about. So those are my general thoughts on COVID-19. We're following the leadership of the county and the state, so there's not too much we can do at a local level. There have been a lot of efforts online promoting some of our businesses who are essential and still open and some of our takeout. Does anybody know the name of that on the, on Facebook that has that information on takeout within the village and the town?
That's Huesick2Go.
Thank you. It's a great page on Facebook, Huesick2Go. And it lists out, you know, content information hours. And I hope that we can do that in the most responsible way. And again, the concern is not just the fact that this virus could be out there and people could be getting it. The concern is we get it in such numbers that our healthcare system cannot keep up. And the sad reality, whichever side of this politically that you may be on is that we're not going to have a clear picture on how things are until we have everybody tested and the antibody tests, which are still in development, working to give us a clear picture of what's going on. So we are still sort of in this strange atmosphere. Families, parents, please talk to your kids about it and please practice these social distancing rules and policies with them and model that for them. Trustees, if you guys want to add anything else on that, feel free.
No, I concur with everything you just said, especially the mask where I noticed a lot of people still aren't using them.
And you know, there are some situations where you're not. If I'm driving to the municipal building and, you know, I'm just going to park, I'm going to walk in, I don't need a mask. If there's anybody near, I'm just going to stay away from them. But if I'm shopping, you bet I have a mask on. And if I'm shopping and I get back to the vehicle, I have hand sanitizer sitting in the front seat and I immediately use it. I mean, those are the things that we unfortunately have to do and has to just become part of our norm. And it's not just about protecting us and protecting our families, but it's keeping people out of the hospitals, which in turn is doing your part to help out and protect all of the first responders and people who are working on the front line. So yeah, thank you, Kevin.
I just have one question. Do we have any method of enforcement of asking people to comply with the face mask?
Andy, what have you seen legally on that as you've, I'm sure been digesting all of the various executive orders?
Yeah, Bobby, this one is, in my mind, a little unclear. There certainly is the governor's executive order that says if you're out in public, that you have to have a mask or a face covering and maintain social distance. There are the executive orders dealing with any kind of congregate gathering. When you're dealing with those issues, there's clear, I think, direction in the executive orders about enforcement. If people are congregating, for instance, at a playground or something, then the local police department has clear authority to break that up. If people are congregating within a building or a structure in violation of that, then the building department has the ability to enforce that. And there are monetary penalties for that, up to $1,000, right? But this issue about the face coverings and the masks, I'm not so sure about the enforcement of that.
Yeah, and I should reword that. I didn't, I didn't mean specifically enforcement. I, I'm not worried about anybody getting arrested and I just was wondering if we have the means for the police department to, if they do see someone, say four or five people standing outside of Stewart's for a half hour, just shooting the breeze with no face mask on, which I witnessed yesterday. And it annoys me that people are, you know, are not complying and you have to walk by them, although I have my face mask on. It just, I worry about those who don't have a face mask on. That's all I was wondering.
Yeah, those are difficult. And if, for instance, in your scenario, outside Stewart's and guys are standing together, if they're not socially distancing, then clearly the police department has the right to say, you have to break this up. If they don't have masks on, do I think it would be appropriate if someone walked by, particularly from the police department and just say, you know, there is an executive order requiring face coverings? Sure. But is there any teeth to that? Not that I can see in the executive order. And that's why I think, Bobby, you see people that are adamant, I'm going to go into the store without a mask. And you've seen some stories where it gets a little confrontational.
Right.
Yeah, it's, I don't have, I haven't seen anything clearly on that issue regarding masks or face coverings.
Okay, I was just curious. That's all.
Right.
Chief Ash on? Is Chief Ash on?
He is on. We're trying to figure out if we can hear him or not. Chief, if. Let's see if I can find you.
Hey, Rob.
Yeah.
I think, I think one of the most frustrating parts is watching people that know, should know better, walking down the street with other people, not socially distanced, not wearing a mask. People that used to be nurses and would have been on the front line if they weren't retired, walking with other people right next to each other. That's the frustrating part of that, I think, what, what people are seeing. And I understand, you know, I think everyone's fearful of, you know, what's going to happen when it comes here. Because it's not a matter of if, it's when. And if people don't take it seriously, they're going to end up in a worse situation than, than what we could ever hope for, you know? And if people don't take it seriously, they're going to end up in a worse situation than what we could ever hope for, you know?
Yeah, and it's hard because right now, I think we still have like six cases in Huesic Falls, the greater town area. We've had six cases. So we really just haven't had that much exposure at all. But you're right, I think the time is going to come when we're going to have the exposure. And I know that we're, people were throwing 12 to 18 months around as a possible vaccine arrival timing. And all of the experts are saying 18 months was kind of like the, if all of the stars align scenario. So this is just, this is the new norm for the next year. And I think schools are already starting to look into plans for how to, you know, approach the next school year with this new social dynamic we have. But to your point, Ben, I totally agree. It's tricky because sometimes you can see the people and you're like, you shouldn't be together. Oh, you know what? You're probably like a family on the wall, or your friends on the wall. But I've noticed it's the kids, I know I'm a teacher, so it's always the kids I'm worried about. But, um, yeah, there's, that's...
Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. I've been listening to everything.
Do you want to say anything about this? The floor is yours if you want to say something.
No, no, I think what you guys are saying, it's, you know, we can go up and tell them, I'm a little unclear about the mask issue as well. I mean, we do see the kids in the park, and we've talked to them on the trail. We've talked to people on the trail. You know, I'm not trying to be too aggressive with them. We kind of remind them. And most people kind of comply as soon as we remind them. So, I mean, it's, I think everybody's working together. Sometimes you just have to be reminded.
Yeah, Bob, there has been some complaints about people down in Second Ward congregating in large groups as well.
I noticed that last week when I was down in that area there, and there was a lot of kids that were playing, and I stopped and talked to the kids. And, you know, I've asked them to go back to their parents and see if they have got the mask. And if the parents don't have the mask, to reach out to us and we'll supply the mask. I've handed a couple masks out to some kids that are walking around. It's going to be hard. It's going to be very difficult to keep those, those masks are probably worn at that time and then, you know, left in wherever afterwards. So we're trying to push it as much as we can.
I'm sure kids that are lower income have more, don't have accessibility to mask.
Well, I've got masks, and I've just been notified by St. Cobain as well that they've got some additional masks that they want to donate to us. So we're going to be working with them to get some more, and, you know, I pick them up down at the county as need be when they come in. So I'll continue to reach out to them and keep the masks here.
Yeah, and I think the takeaway, and I think it sounds like we all are in agreement. So press, pay attention. We, as a board, are encouraging the use of masks. We want to see it more. We see, we have been seeing it a lot, but we want to see it more. We're particularly focused on children. And we have masks available. If you need it, you can stop by the police department and request them. And if we end up needing more, we will get more. But this is, I mean, we don't think it's as big an issue now as it's in bigger places, in the nursing homes, and in some of the bigger, tighter manufacturing locations. But it's coming. It's going to be coming to rural areas sooner rather than later, and that's the thing I'm most worried about.
I may want to get some... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We just, what I wanted to point out is I'm probably going to have to get more clarification on the mask because as the warm weather comes, there's going to be parties at people's houses, and I know I'm going to get the phone call from people wanting us to respond over there to people's private homes. And, you know, that's something I think that the board and I are going to have to come to an agreement on. You're going to get the phone calls, I'm going to get the phone calls, you're going to get the phone calls if I go over and tell them to do something. So it's going to be a vicious circle.
Yeah, I know. Like, and who wants to be that guy that is the one to call? I witnessed in my, out my back window on Sunday, and Vanessa can probably say the same thing. I mean, a couple yards away, there was probably 20-plus people on top of each other, you know, partying. And they had a huge fire going, which, number one, it's not May 16th yet. And so they shouldn't have had an open fire. At the same time, I didn't want to be the guy to call the police and rain on somebody's parade. You know, they're having a birthday party. And it was all adults. They were, you know, they were all 20, over 21 at somebody's parent's house. And it was, you know, it went on into the, into the late at night.
Well, I think we should remind everybody that they can always call, whether it's me directly, a lot of people have my cell phone number, or call the station, or call 911. And you can be, not have to give your name. So it's not like we're going to force your name out there. So if someone wants to call up and say, hey, there's a party going on over there, or there's a fire going on over there, you know, we're going to respond. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have someone's name and address to, you know, respond and say, hey, you know, so-and-so called and said this. I mean, if we're making an arrest on it, we're going to see it anyway. It's, you know, this is a different circumstances here.
Andy, do you want to add anything?
Well, I just, I just want, I'm just going to go to Bobby's point now, where he was talking about the birthday party. You know, there was a birthday party in California, and out of that birthday party, five people tested positive for COVID. So, you know, it can happen. And when you're, you know, not socially distancing and not wearing masks, you just need one person that's asymptomatic, and, you know, it affects everyone else. The only other thing I was going to say, Rob, is that, you know, I watch the governor's press conferences, and whether you're, you know, on one side or the other, he talks about the masks a lot. And the masks are not, they're not for you. They're for everyone else that you come in contact with.
Oh, for sure.
And how socially responsible you need to be to wear a mask and protect everyone else. I mean, you're protecting yourself in the meantime, but the mask protects others from you. And that's really what you're wearing the mask for. You're not wearing it for yourself. You're wearing it for everyone else that you come in contact with. People that you can't, that you walk into Stewart's or Cumberland Farms and you can't be socially distant, you're protecting them. And that's, that's really what it's all about. And it's frustrating to see people that don't adhere to that and wear a mask because, you know, it's going to happen. It's going to happen, you know? If you don't, if you don't wear it, you have more of a chance of getting it than you don't. And you have more of a chance of giving it. Now, how would you like, you know, how would you like to be the person that was, you know, COVID-19 in that birthday party and gave it to everyone else? You know, that's, it's very frustrating.
Yeah, and it's not easy, and there's, you know, we understand.
And it just pushes everything down. That's the problem.
Yep, yep. All right, well, thank you, guys.
I'll mute myself now. Bye.
All right, let's move on to the meeting. This is our people-to-be-heard section. As a reminder, we still have the public hearing out on Local Law Number One, so you may speak on that, or you may speak on anything specific regarding any concerns. So if you would like to do that, now is your chance to unmute it, introduce yourself with your name and street address, and then take it away. All right, hearing none, I will come back to this one more time. Hey, Jim Herbert, you can actually click your screen and hit the mute video button so you don't have to keep covering up the video with whatever we see on your screen there, sheet or something. Hi, Jim. Good to see you. All right, moving on, reports. Trustees, I sent out quite late, my apologies. The reports will plow right through them. Treasures report, we do have Denise on if she wants to comment. Or Ben, anybody like to speak or comment on the treasure report?
Yeah, I had pulled it up. The new software is being used for the water bills. Denise put in her report that it's working really great. Online bill paying started with the April billing and is working good so far. Also completed the tentative 2021 budget. So the main things in that, in her report this past month.
Hey, Denise, can you give us an idea again of how many people have paid using the online option, online option?
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are. Yep.
I'm going to estimate somewhere between 40 and 50.
And how many checks do you think we've been getting in the box in the municipal building?
The girls have said it's been pretty steady. So it's been okay. You know, we're afraid of how the cash flow is going to work and how people are going to be able to handle the bills coming in, but so far, it's okay.
All right.
And one of the big things, too, is we did get the re-levy list to the county for the taxes.
Yeah, thank you.
So I actually did just have one quick question on the paying online. There's like a $2.75 fee. I'm assuming the village doesn't see any of that money.
No. No, it's strictly the customer. It goes right to the company, the credit card company.
Yeah.
Just curious.
All right, unless there's any more questions for Denise or Ben looking for motion to approve the treasure report. Thank you, Basil.
Second.
Second, thank you, Bobby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post carries. Police reports. Chief, anything you want to share?
Just real quick, for the month of April, we've handled 127 calls compared to last March, or March, which was 119. So there is an increase of calls, and I anticipate an increase for the rest of the year, especially during the summers. Most notably during domestics, there has been an increase of them, and I do anticipate that to increase over the summer months for obvious reasons. We've had a total, our arrest numbers are down. The officers have been attempting to try to either put off the arrests for the next month, or, you know, we've been holding some investigations. And the mayor does have, I think he's going to, he'll be able to share with the board at a later time. And you guys can reach out to me on any calls or any questions that you may have on them. But other than that, everything seems to be okay. We've talked about the mask and such, something that I just think we all have to stick together on whatever direction we're going to take this. So that, you know, when the calls come in, like you said, you guys are going to get stopped at Stewart's, you're going to get stopped at the market or wherever you may be. And people are going to, you know, complain to you. And if we're going to enforce them, we got to make sure that we enforce it all together. And I've also put on for the hiring of two part-timers, again, it's not, no additional cost to us or part-timers. I have the resignation of one of our officers that have left. He's just been too busy down in the city of Troy. An officer from Troy, Maury First Needy, he's been out injured, so I've lost his services. And Nick Swanson, who was picking up a number of our hours here, has taken another job on a full-time basis. So he's down to hopefully just one day a week. So I'm going to be short. And so I'm going to be in need of these two officers.
And we'll, for anyone listening, we'll go into executive session because we're not legally allowed to discuss personnel in open meetings, but that's later. And trustees, if you have any questions, save them for executive sessions on the two officers.
And I mean, I'll be available, I'm in the office right now. We're actually tied up on an arrest right at the moment. But I'll be available by my cell phone. You guys can reach out to me if there's any questions that you have during that meeting that you have.
All right, we'll do, any questions for Chief?
Yeah, I do. I've been talking to Bob about this, and maybe Andy can help out on this, is we've had a vehicle or vehicles parked in the parking lots in the village that are uninsured, both a car, which is being used as a storage shed, and a trailer, both are unregistered to this time according to their plates, anyway. Andy, what's the law on that?
Keep in mind, Andy, it's in the village parking lot. And I think we discussed this before. I really believe for us to have a, we can enforce it, but we need a little bit of strength. We should have signs up there that there's no overnight parking, per se, of, or whatever way we're going to word it. Because this gentleman's coming in there at night and parking that. I've had numerous discussions with him. And I've told him that I'm going to start towing these vehicles on him.
Chief, you said you've had numerous discussions, so he knows exactly.
Who knows? Yep, he knows.
Andy, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, I circulated some communication earlier that I have all of the village's local laws going back to 1998, which were available at the Department of State online. And within those, there's no local law regulating the village parking lots. This really should be done by local law. And Chief Ash, that's where you get the meat, the strength and the ability to enforce. I think we need to put that together for the various village parking lots, propose that as a local law, get that adopted. That will give you regulatory enforcement. That'll give you the ability to sign it, to regulate it, to close it during certain hours. So these are things that we, Kevin in particular, we need to get together and outline the, each individual lot and what regulations the village thinks are appropriate for those lots. It can include literally closing them off during certain hours overnight. It could allow very limited overnight. You can regulate all of those things, but right now, I don't see anything. If there's an older village ordinance or village local law that predates that, then forward that to me and I'll review it. But if that's the case, it probably needs updating anyway. So I think this has been bouncing around for a while, and I think the best method is to have a very clear local law dealing with each of the village parking lots. Now, having said that, that just deals with regulating the use of the village-owned parking lots. If there's an unregistered, unlicensed vehicle on village property that's being used, for instance, as a storage unit, that also gives rise to me to some thoughts about, well, wait a minute, that's not an allowable use at that location. You can't be using. That's irrespective of whether it's a parking lot or it's, you know, the village green. You can't be using village-owned parking or village-owned property for that purpose. And if that's going on, that's something that I think we should coordinate with the building department with Mark on because there may be some other enforcement mechanisms.
Well, we've issued tickets on that, and he's been in court, and he's been fined. So he moved the vehicle, and then he brought it back. And, you know, so I was trying to be decent with him. We went and spoke to him and told him to knock it off. But he's the type of guy that, you know, you give him an inch, he takes a mile on you, so we'll...
Yeah, and we're a little, it's a little difficult right now with the villages, or strike that, with the courts being closed. So the ability to issue a citation and haul them back in the village court, and this time, give them a little bit more, a little bit more of a monetary penalty that may send more of a message. Or, you know, going into another court seeking enforcement. Right now, we're a little, we're in a tough bind because the courts are closed. I don't know when they're going to reopen, but they're closed right now.
My question, Andy, is what about trailers? He's had two trailers. Either they come and go, but they've been parked in the lot, not attached to a car, but just sitting in the lot, and both of those have been uninsured and unregistered. So is, under the Motor Vehicle Act, can you actually park a registered vehicle in a village property?
Well, irrespective of, if that's the case, village property or even private property, there are, under the, Mark Sirdam, correct me if I'm wrong, but certainly even the zoning law of the village identifies where storage units can happen and where they can't. And in terms, Kevin, I'd have to look at the VNT law in terms of that kind of use, but right now...
I think it gets under, Andy, I think the local law may be that there's, you can have two cars on your property that are unregistered. I could be, correct me if I'm wrong on that. Mark, you'll have to look up that.
It's one.
Just one.
It's one. So that meaning that you have your one car that's registered and your one car that doesn't.
That's on your own property.
Yeah, that's on your own property.
But when you go into...
A shed or something like that, when our zoning laws pertain to, you know, that being like a separate structure on your... A shed or something like that, when our, our zoning laws pertain to, you know, that being like a separate structure on your own property in a parking lot, I don't see where that would be permitted.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mark. I think that's uh.
But in the parking lot, the, and, and it's not a problem, when we tow those vehicles, we become responsible for the vehicle, meaning that we have to pay for the tow, the storage, et cetera, until the person, we have to go and get the money from him, but if he abandons it, then it becomes ours, and that creates a whole other problem. Mark or Neil and I are dealing that with a, with a van that we got down at the highway garage. So we gotta keep all that in mind as well.
Yeah, I understand that, but this has been going on for almost a year now, where these cars have been sitting there over and over again. And uh, he's also the same individual that ran a electrical cord from his apartment across.
And we, and we went after him on that, and um, I, we, he corrected that. And then I told him to stop parking the vehicle there. He stopped for a short time. The troopers called me because they caught him down on uh, one of these back roads into town. He told the troopers that I told him that he can park down there. I told the troopers that's not true. They chased him out. They, they gave him tickets over there for unregistered, uninspected. And it's just, it, it, I, he just, I don't know if he just doesn't get it, or if he thinks he's gonna stay one step ahead of us. But on this particular person, I will correct that with him as, probably tonight. Um, I know him quite well in the sense that I know how to get a hold of him, so I will, not well, like as a friend, but as a, I know where I can reach him.
Alright, well, if this isn't handled by like Thursday. If, if this isn't handled by Thursday, tow it. Let's, let's be done with this and move on.
Well, if you look at, just recently, he moved the trailer closer to the Tri-State Credit Union. It looks like uh, Appalachia from, what it looks like, with uh, a junky trailer loaded with all kinds of junk. And uh, Jim Martinaz has complained about this back in, I think, the fall. He came to one of our board meetings.
Right.
Yeah.
We gotta keep this in mind too, because he was living in those apartments over there. And he was telling me that his landlord told him that he can park in that parking lot. And I told him that that's not true. The landlord doesn't dictate the village parking lot. So we have landlords that are telling them, oh yeah, you know, yeah, this is where you park. So I'm not using that as defense for the people, but.
Well, that's okay when they're registered, but his vehicles aren't even registered.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, this is why we have to be, if we're gonna put signs up or address it, it's gotta be consistent. We can't say Bob Ash can park there because he's got a, a two thousand and nineteen car. But you know, Kevin O'Malley, who's driving a, you know, a two thousand and nine junk, not that you are Kevin, I'm just using as an example, uh, can't park there, you know, so that's why I say, because we both live in an apartment. And if our landlord's saying, go ahead and park there, and the town, and the village is saying, yeah, it's okay, because they.
Well, look, this is, I mean, it, it's, it's unlicensed. He's been warned multiple times. He's been well aware of this. This is, in any situation like this, we'd be saying tow it. So give him a day, and if it's not out of there, tow it.
Okay. Um, I'll go over tonight.
Thank you.
As soon as I get off the phone. One other thing before um, I go off. The, I've received two complaints on the trail um, for unleashed dogs. We go down there, I've been down there, I went down earlier. I have not had a problem with unleashed dogs. But um, a lady has come in, and then I received a phone call from someone that was concerned about the dogs um, running around down there with the owner. They just take them off leash. And again, I told the lady, instead of them confronting the people, they need to give us a call, and we'll go down there. So I don't know if we should put signs up down there, if they're gonna be read, or that says, you know, animals or, I told her we would talk about to the village and the town that they'd put it on their face, Facebook pages as well. Just to remind people that we need, if you're down on the trails, the dogs have to be leashed.
I did the Greenway address that on their Facebook page just recently. There's been some complaints on there as well. And um, I think on the signs leading to the Greenway, there are signs that say your dog must be leashed.
Okay.
I think the law though reads that, if you look, if you look at it, and we did bring this up at a town board meeting last night, that dogs need to be leashed or under control, so they can be under an owner's control and not be leashed. So that, that's just something we need to clarify.
We need to clarify that, then, Mark, because this, that's what this lady was upset about. Even though the dogs went to the owner when the owner said, come here, and the dog went over to him. She felt that.
Well, and that's under control.
But she felt that it's still not right for them to be down there with the dog.
Well, I, I understand. I'm just saying, I, I believe that's what the law says.
Okay.
Andy, have that one to be reviewed, please.
And I, I met an individual on the Greenway on Saturday who was walking his dog, and I know him. And the dog is a friendly dog, but the, like Mark said, he was under, he didn't have a leash at that point. But as soon as I started approaching, he called the dog, and the dog came right to his side and, and let us walk by without, but that's the, the case. I'm sure people are complaining about that, because it, it was way ahead of him, but he called him and the dog came back. He was loose, but.
I used to do the same thing with my previous dog. Uh, he, you know, and the only reason I would do it is so he wouldn't scare other people. I knew I had him under control. He would always come to me. But I did it just so it wouldn't scare anybody.
Right. Bob, just one other thing, just a while on the Greenway. Um, I've been doing, walking it a lot lately, and um, I've been seeing a lot of teenage kids, primarily young girls. Like in Neil's area, the, um, where the access to the Greenway. Um, matter of fact, I met a couple this afternoon under the River Street Bridge, smoking pot. And two girls, and then the other day, there was like twelve of them. They were down by the scrub ski landing down right by the water, and there was at least twelve of them. They were just sitting around there smoking pot. And not, none of them had masks and none of, they certainly weren't social distancing. In the last week, that's, that's the third time in the last week I've seen them down there.
Alright, we'll step it up a little bit more with the patrols.
Yeah, you can't get down there via vehicle. It has to be either.
They're gonna have to get out and walk down along those uh, that, that part of it there.
Yeah, let's make that happen, please.
Okay, I will. I'm, I'm gonna step out. I'm gonna go take a look at that car right now, so I'll, I'll jump back into this meeting if I get back here shortly. But if you can give me a call at the end of your um, of your executive board meeting.
Will do.
Or call me while you're in it if you need me.
Thanks, Chief.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Looking for motion to approve the police report.
Motion.
Thank you, Ben. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's. Code enforcement. Mark?
It's been a lot, lot quieter these days for me. You know, there's not a lot of inspections going on. There's some, uh, I've been doing, uh, you know, just uh, answering calls, uh, answering complaints, uh, done quite a few building permits. Uh, people, you know, I do, when I do the building permits, it's understood that uh, there are limits as to what people can do, especially working by themselves, living in small projects, home projects. So um, that's about it. There's not uh, there hasn't been a lot going on. It's been pretty quiet.
Mark, have you spoken with anyone else regionally who does code enforcement in terms of what they are and aren't doing under the current COVID circumstances?
Uh, not specifically with code enforcement. Uh, in some of the county meetings, uh, some of the places are, they're not bothering uh, small crews of, I say small crews, they're not, they're not bothering the mom, uh, uh, mom and pop type of operations, you know, we just have a couple guys working. I, I mean, I have. I just said, uh, I've shut a couple down already. Uh, if they have more than one person, they're not supposed to be working. So I've, I've walked in on a couple, and I've told them, you're not supposed to be working, you know, um, so I, I make it clear when it's, when it comes up.
Okay. Alright, great. Any other questions?
Uh, Mark, I noticed some good news lately regarding zombie properties. There's been quite a few that have been, uh, had some work done to them. Uh, the Flip Stack property on High Street and uh, one eighty-one Main Street also has been repaired, the porch, so. And I've seen a few others being worked on as well, so I don't know what the change is, but that's a, a good thing.
Well, unfortunately, Flip Stack is a good one where uh, I don't know if they went back and fixed it. They fixed it once and didn't do it properly. And I told them I wouldn't pass it because it was, it wasn't done very well. And why uh, on that particular property, why they're spending money fixing up things like the porch, when they have the rear sill on the property is completely rotted and needs to be replaced.
They've done, just recently, and they put a new roof on the front uh, portion of the house, and they've been doing some painting and some other work. So take a look, it's, it's a huge improvement to what it was.
But it's got structural issues that they're not dealing with. That's, you know, what I'm looking at it from a code enforcement standpoint. I mean, the structural issues are the important issues that need to be dealt with first. Why they're doing that other stuff, you know, I'm never gonna, I'm never gonna issue a CO for it until they fix those structural issues. And that's also one where somebody went in, did a sidewalk, and they did the, they poured concrete sidewalk, never got a permit, and they didn't do it right, and somebody's gonna have to redo it. So yeah, I, I do see some things like that going on. I've been stressing with some of these property management companies to please call me. Don't just send a crew there and, you know, work with me on these things. Let's do them right the first time, so we don't have to go through this and, and me have to say, no, I'm not gonna pass it, you know, it's, so I am in some of that. So I'd like to see more of it. Uh, you know, Ball Street, I did issue a permit for that. It's a family fixing that one up. You know, that's, that place has been an eyesore for a long time, so it's fine.
That's, that's a huge improvement already. It's been cleaned up, and they're starting to put some uh, work into that one as well.
A lot of work, yep.
Also, the Stevens property on Wilder has a for sale sign, so that's a little movement there too.
Yep, that's been out there for a little bit. Hopefully that, you know, if they get realistic about their price.
Any other questions for Mark? If not, looking for motion to approve the code enforcement report.
Motion. Second.
Alright, Vanessa and Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, just one question, Rob, and I'm sure um, you got an email, and I'm not sure if, Mark, I'm pretty sure you were aware of it too. We had a question last, um, a- after last board meeting regarding the amount of work that Jamie Jerome was doing on the country club. Someone from the Easy Street area was concerned about that it wasn't in compliance with DEC. Did you ever address that, or have we done anything? It was Rick Hunt, Rob. Remember, he sent us an email.
Uh, I'm trying to remember if.
I've had a conversation with Rick too, and he doesn't like my answers. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, uh, that is Jerome's property. He is in compliance with DEC. He's been in contact with DEC. He's had him out there a few times. Uh, he is, uh, he's doing what, it's his land. He can do what he wants with his land within, within reason, as long as he's following their uh, their guidelines as far as like runoff and stuff like that, and I see where it's.
As far as the stream and.
He puts up the barriers he's supposed to put up for runoff. Uh, you know, Rick is referring to this as clear cutting. He's not clear cutting anything. It's not, they're not mature trees down there. It's all scrub brush. That was all pasture land at one time.
It's all just grown brush, exactly.
So it's just scrub brush growing up in, and he's clearing it off. So he got, uh, when he went to have his burn pile, he went through all the proper channels to do that. You know, I see, I don't see the issue. It's gonna be part of the country club eventually.
And I, I stopped up there again yesterday, over the weekend, and it, it's not even visible from the Easy Street properties. Unless you go to the very edge of the property and look down. I mean, you can't see it from inside anyone's home.
And Mark?
That, that's wondering about that.
Well, he, does his property go all the way to Easy Street?
It does, and actually, he bought another property up there.
If he wanted to add an entrance from that side, would he have to go through the village to do that?
Uh, I don't think so, unless.
I think he would need a curb cut from the village.
Does he need a curb cut if there's not a curb?
Andy?
Yeah, Kevin, I think is correct. It's either a curb cut or subject to check of the village laws, Mark. He, he at least need a driveway permit, wouldn't he, from the highway department?
Uh, I'm not familiar with that.
I think uh, Bobby, I was looking over uh, that email, which I had missed, and I think that was one of his concerns. So I think we can look into that, um, is even if he's, if he has the legal ability to do that, I know with um, looking over the um, Twin Rivers, um, that went in front of the board because it was a, had to do with traffic and guiding um, and, and all the, the busyness factor, so we can find that out and get back to him on that. Um, but in terms of the, the idea that what he's doing is not, you know, up to code, or is not up to DEC standards, it's not true. Um, and it's been checked multiple times by Mark. It's been checked by DEC, so everything he's doing, he has complete legal authority um, to do. Um, but that issue about the possibility of setting up an entrance uh, on the other side, that's something we can look into, so.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Mark. Um, clerk, deputy clerk report. Trustees, any questions, comments? Marie, if you wanna, or Judy, if you wanna pipe in, you certainly can.
I think everything's on there. As, you know, we basically have been working on the bills coming in, uh, both remotely from home with the laptops and in the office. The e-checks and credit card payments have, have been going in rather smoothly once we got kinks worked out at Williamson, and just the day-to-day stuff, trying to keep going.
Appreciate you not putting in the report, all of you wanting to throw your computers out the window in the office as they were having issues.
Didn't mention that, no sir.
Alright, looking for a motion to approve. Clerk, deputy clerk report.
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Seconds?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Higher Department, Bobby and/or Neil. We've already discussed a lot of this.
Is Neil still there?
Yeah, I'm still alive.
I'll let you speak.
No, I think it's pretty plain and simple. Um, we did end up taking, me and Bobby just talked about the garbage can down in the parking lot across from the laundromat. We ended up removing that for now. Um, I know we're just talking about putting our other garbage cans out there. We've had Massachusetts cars and American cars that just pull up to the garbage can and offload it. I've had numerous complaints from my sister-in-law and pictures and everything, so um, I think we're gonna have to address somehow we can police uh, people parking down there and emptying their garbage, or, you know, we'll have to figure something out. Cause I've talked with county waste, they've been picking up garbage cans now for the past couple weeks. And just soon as they empty them, somebody fills them right back up, so. I think that's one of the biggest issues right now, is people filling our garbage cans with household stuff plus just, I think there is uh, a sleeping bag and some other kids' toys and stuff. We're also dumped, dumped there, so. So I don't know if you guys wanna discuss what you might wanna do with garbage cans, or.
I heard a couple people reach out about that specific garbage can at the Greenway. It was used um, by a lot of people the right way.
Correct, yeah, and I seen, actually, Friday afternoon, I was down waiting for Louisa to finish up paving. I saw Ellen Scott down there with the white garbage bag, and she picked up everything in the parking lot, and she took it, put it in her car, and so, you know, there's people that are out there that do care. It's these people that don't care.
Yep.
Right, and my concern about the, in uh, people picking up garbage, I mean, I, I, I'm as guilty as anybody else. I walked by there the other day on the north end, uh, from like the laundromat to the, the north end, it's a sewer treatment plant. And there was coffee cups from Stewart's and from Cumberland Farms, but I didn't have rubber gloves on or any gloves. So I'm not gonna pick up garbage, especially with what's going on, you know, with the COVID situation to, and I, I didn't have a bag or anything to put it in, but I do notice that off, get off the Greenway for one second that, and I, you know, and I appreciate you picking up the garbage when I told you about it. And this one individual walks around the village, around Rip, from Ripper Road all the way to the shop bridge, and she hangs uh, like Stewart, or like uh, Grand Union bags off the edge of the guardrails. She picks up all the garbage and puts it in. She picks up all the garbage and puts it on the, under the guardrails along, uh, Mechanic Street and River Road, which is great, and you guys stop and pick it up. But unfortunately, on the Greenway, there's nobody to, to do that and, uh, I, I don't know what the, what the answer is, but throwing it on the ground is not the answer.
No, no, my, my brother Ricky, when he does, uh, South End down by my house, he'll, he'll pick up a bunch of garbage, bring it up to my house and he'll put the recyclables in my recycling can and the garbage in my garbage can, so, yeah. I don't think it'll be any easy solution because no matter what we do, we're gonna have people that just don't respect what we have.
No, and if we even, and I agree, if we put garbage cans out there, we gotta worry about our, you know, them just getting filled up and overflowing and then we have a bigger problem, too, but I understand. We have to come up with some type of solution, but it's food for thought anyway. We can, I think we can, should be discuss that in, uh, in, for maybe discussion for next month's meeting as well.
We don't have, we don't have a lot of garbage cans at the downtown area, so there's, the ones that are there are being filled up very fast. I think the only way to rectify that is even put more garbage cans out or have the garbage picked up more often than just one day a week.
Are you, we brought that up at last board meeting, right? We addressed that. Didn't we discuss the possibility of getting additional garbage cans for downtown?
Yeah, we did. Uh, I looked into a few places. They average around three hundred, three fifty a piece for new garbage cans. They're gonna last a long time.
Is, is that something we have money, we can find around for?
Well.
Uh, the cost was around three thousand dollars for ten garbage cans.
Oof, Neil?
But there should, I would think for, you know, some kind of green funding, uh, thing should be out there as far as being able to get some type of small grant or funding to maybe get some garbage cans like that, as long as it's going for something green like that.
Actually, I think where the garbage can is right now, it is not even village property. I think it belongs to Jack Cateneo's, isn't that correct?
No, I, that's, that's all village, that parking lot and stuff.
Parking lot is, there's a, along the path, there's a, there's a, a spot where it goes through Cateneo's, but.
Yeah. Well, you know, we can talk about it all night or, you know, we can just try to get some feelers out there to see what we can find to hopefully fix some of the issues.
All right.
Can I interject a little bit?
Denise?
We had given a donation of quite sizable money to the LDC. Maybe they could give, donate some of that money back for some garbage cans for the downtown. I mean, if it's gonna be, I mean, you know, three thousand isn't cheap, but, you know, it would definitely enhance it.
I think the ones that are into the village park right now are ones that the Chamber of Commerce bought years and years ago. And we probably did that back in the eighties and they're still there, but they're, they're, they're not in great shape, but they lasted a long time.
Well, it's a thought. Maybe we should put a plan together and approach them.
It's a good idea, Denise. I like it.
I agree with that. I, I have no problem taking, uh, I can work with Kevin if you want. We can look into that. You okay with that, Kevin?
Sure.
Love it. Thank you, guys. All right, um, unless there's more questions, looking for a motion to approve the highway department, uh, report?
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby, and I think Vanessa was a second.
Sorry.
That works. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Um, community service, I, it skipped over because we actually stopped using community service back in late March, uh, so we don't have a report and we're kind of waiting to see when other people open up that sort of thing, especially with the courts being closed before we resume that, so that's why I skipped over that. Uh, sewer department reports. Anything you wanna hop on and mention? Looks, um, looks, uh, pretty good. Um, he's been involved, Kenny and Keith have been involved with the new pump station installation, working with Louise and Jay squared. And, um, the, the summer, um, sludge and, uh, numbers have picked back up. I think, uh, we had one of our highest numbers, um, so our income uh, from sludge is a full thirty thousand dollars ahead of what it was last year this time, so, very good. Let's see if any, uh, comments, questions, looking for motion to approve the sewer department report.
Motion.
Thank you, Ben.
Second.
Second, thank you, Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and water department report. Jimmy, you wanna mention anything or any of the trustees? I will take that as a no. Uh, it's pretty self-explanatory right now. Things are sort of business as usual. So, uh, without a mind, looking for a motion to, uh, approve the water department report.
Motion.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay.
That was like three people at once. Uh, say that again?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Jim, we can hear you now.
I'm sorry, bud, it took a while to get. Nothing has changed since we've been, uh, through this whole COVID thing.
Hey, are you in front of a computer right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Turn your speakers down a whole bunch.
How's that?
Still kind of echoey. I muted you, Jim. We love you. If you can figure out a way to speak without, uh, the, the crazy feedback, 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 feedback. Uh, hop on, hop on. But it's, it seems like business as usual. All right, thank you. Um, unless Jim hops on, we'll, um, go to our minutes approval. Um, any questions, corrections on the April fourteenth minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April fourteenth regular meeting minutes.
Motion.
Thank you, Craig, I think that was?
It was.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Trustee committee reports. I'll just go in the order of who I see on the screen. Bobby, anything?
No, I don't.
Ben, anything?
Uh, no, just, uh, loving being on the board till September, at least.
Just waiting on next meeting, you know, I'm sure it'll be like twenty twenty-two before you're allowed off.
Why can't it just be June twenty-third and they said you have to have the election? That's all right.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, Kevin?
Uh, no, nothing.
Craig? Vanessa?
Nothing.
Emily?
Nothing.
All righty. Um, old business. Uh, we had one item that I just want to continue to, uh, table and it's probably in the mid, uh, summer. Um, sort of hit this head on as a plan for next year, but I know that the transfer station has been busy. Neil, are you still on? Have, have we seen, um, is this sort of the standard amount that we see in the summer or has it been a little bit more than we normally see?
Well, it's, it's about the same. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had a rush because there was a lot, a lot of miscommunications with a local guy and we ended up with pretty much, uh, earned out, burned out. We had to get rid of, so. Uh, I was told it was gonna be two dump truck loads and he ended up bringing up like six and a half loads on us, so. That was a good long week of running back and forth, going dumpsters and stuff, so. But now we're down to maybe a dumpster, two dumpsters every two weeks, which is about average, I think.
All right. Great, looking for motion to table the, um, discussion regarding the, uh, transfer station.
Motion.
Thank you, Emily.
Second.
Thank you, Ben and Craig, whatever it was. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, new business. First item we need to discuss is the Memorial Day Parade and, um, it's something that I think we all want to happen, but in the reality of what's going on and the governor's executive orders, I don't know if it's something we can even have, um, or in some form. Um, I know that when the parade for Ron Jones happened, uh, it was something that we as a village didn't host or have an event, but we gave guidance on. Um, and, um, I was glad to see, um, the police and first responders not only participating but encouraging and handling the social distancing respectfully. And I was really glad to see that across the village that that happened. Uh, that being said, it, you know, it wasn't a village event. We just asked for and received, um, uh, good responses for people who were going to participate in handling it well. Andy, um, can you just sort of comment legally and, and on the, on the governor's executive orders on this and then I wanna kinda hear what trustees have to say about it?
Uh, I will. So, one thing to keep in mind is while the earlier parade it certainly was not a village event, but it was also as described to me and I think has actually happened. It was basically a row of cars going through the village and folks stayed in their cars and appropriate social distance was maintained. With a village, you, you strike that, with a Memorial Day parade, that might happen in the village. To me, that, that raises a little bit of, of a different consideration where people wanna come out and watch the parade as it goes by. This does raise the issue of the governor's executive order dealing with any kind of social gathering. This is not one where maintaining social distance and wear your mask. There's a separate executive order that does prohibit any type of congregate gathering or social gathering. And that's within the, um, governor's executive order. That particular executive order's been extended through June sixth. Um, it is on the Department of Health guidance as well. Um, so there is the executive order dealing with no social or congregate gatherings are allowed at all. They either have to be postponed or canceled. And in that regard, some municipalities that itself conducts a Memorial Day parade have been canceled. For instance, the city of Albany canceled theirs. So while this is not a village event, as I understand it, there, there is that issue about the social gathering or congregate gathering that I think the board members should consider.
The parade itself has lost, uh, some of the bands, so, um, the American Legion, which actually hosts the parade and gets village permission, uh, has been playing it by ear to see what happens, hoping that the, uh, governor would open up, uh, to things like this, but, uh, they're, they're still in a holding pattern. I know the, the town withdrew their support yesterday.
I was gonna ask Mark if he wanted to speak up, uh, as to town supervisor, what the decision was, but it sounds like we already got that. Mark, feel free to add anything if you want.
Yeah, I spoke with Tammy. Uh, I forget her last name off the top of my head.
Snoop.
Snoop, yep, on the phone yesterday or the day before. And basically at this point, they're hoping that we, we don't support it anyway, cause they're, they're not getting a lot of support. Uh, people who are interested in coming and marching in the parade in light of all the, uh, things that are going on, so. Yeah, but we came to the same determination that Andy was just, uh, reviewing. We kinda came to the same thing. Uh, you know, as far as the governor's order and, um, the social distancing, it just, we decided, uh, it would be going against, uh, kinda the executive order.
Rob?
Yeah.
I think one of the things you have to worry about in that type of situation is that if you were the only one that was having that event, everyone else is gonna come here. So you only, you not only have to worry about the people in your own village, but you have to worry about the people taking it back wherever they're from. And I think that runs into more problems than, than what I think we wanna have to deal with.
I was kinda thinking that, uh, a way to honor those who lost their lives would be to have a small ceremony uh, going as they do in the morning at eight o'clock, going from, uh, monument to the cemetery with a small group, social distancing and just having a pro, you know, small, uh, ceremony for each spot.
But even then, you have, um, people clustered together, like if they're gonna do the standard frontline with the flags and rifles, they're gonna have to separate it out more, all wear masks, and even then you're gonna have, uh, it gets in that wishy-washy, are we, are we okaying an event happening? I mean, if that ceremony happens with a few people, um.
I mean, traditionally, there's only a handful of people that even watch it, other than the participants themselves, which, I mean, I wouldn't expect the school band to be there. I would expect maybe a color guard from the American Legion and, uh, some canned music or a trumpeter or something like that, not a whole.
Well, yeah, the, I, as the, the band teacher, I know that the school is not gonna be there, um, but, um, if there, there is a student who did express interest in playing tap, so if there is something, um, that happens ceremony-wise, I know there's a student who would just show up and do it from a distance. Um, but Andy, it sounds like we kind of have to not support the event in terms of, um, the same thing the town did, um, but if something happens, okay, as long as they.
I think on the record, I think you certainly have to say the village, uh, will certainly comply with the governor's executive order on no social gatherings or congregate gatherings and uh, certainly would not support that. And if a private group does this, we, we heard earlier, quite frankly, private property owners having birthday parties in the backyard and how would you handle that in terms of the police going over and we talked about enforcement in that situation here, I don't think a- any kind of ceremony could be supported or encouraged by the village. Um, if it were to happen, then you'd be facing the same kind of situation that would be similar to, you know, the group on the corner or the birthday party in the, uh, in the backyard. I don't think it's anything the village on the record can support or encourage in light of the governor's executive order, though.
The only thing I can think of would just be to, to have people make a, a video and, and post it online. That's kind of, uh, on the, unfortunately, the only way I see this sort of working in a way where we can support it and get it out there and it can still be honoring for what it's supposed to be.
Well, I would even. Well, I, I have to come back in and say, it, it's not anything that the village, I think, should be officially supporting or encouraging. Cause even that type of small gathering, it can be viewed as a social gathering that is now prohibited under the governor's executive order. That's why a lot of folks, at least for this Memorial Day, are, are not holding those types of ceremonies. Um, and, and I don't think the village on the record should be, as I say, either supporting or encouraging that.
Makes sense. It definitely stinks a lot, but, uh, I, it's the right thing and it's, you know, following the, the executive orders and the guidelines, so I get it. Um, so then I, I will reach out to them, uh, tomorrow. Uh, and explaining to them the unfortunate situation, which I have a feeling they already, uh, know what they're expecting.
And I think it's a good, um, position to be consistent with the town on that issue as well.
Yep. All right, um, in that case, moving on. Uh, the sanitary sewer improvement project, we had a, a series of three change orders, uh, that I, I sent out to review. Uh, the first one is change order number eight. This is with the Louise Brothers contracting. It is, uh, specific to the, um, oh, I can't remember which one that one is. I have my mouse on the wrong computer here. Hold on one second. I have like six screens in front of me here and I still can't figure everything out. Maybe it's because I have six screens in front of me here. Um, but the, the, Neil, do you, can you refresh me on which one, uh, number eight is?
That will be the air relief valves.
Oh, yes, the air relief valves. This was a solution, uh, that, that Kenny came up with. The, 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 the valves that they installed didn't really make much sense because it required, um, regular upkeep in a confined location, which we don't have the proper permitting and the equipment to get to, so. Uh, we switched to kind of what everyone else uses and that was something the village very much wanted to do and authorize, so. Um, with that in mind, just that specific, uh, change order, we're all behind it and all made sense and it's gonna save us a boatload of money. It was kind of a strange design, the original. It was kind of a strange design, the original way to begin with, so with that in mind, unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion to approve. Change order eight authorized. All right, Ben, Craig, any further discussion on that? All in favor? All right, carries. Change order three, change order four were the other side of this project with. Come on, type in your computer. With J squared. These, Neil and I have a little bit of frustration about. We did get the, them asked for and signed by MRB and by J squared for our approval. We asked about a few things related to, because they both seem to be related to the decision. To postpone the work until after winter, some of the costs. We just feel are a little squirrely. I spoke with Neil earlier and our recommendation is. And Neil, feel free to speak up. We would like to table these two, to dive in a little bit further. Into the history and the records to see. I really wasn't that satisfied with the answer. And we've had enough situations where we feel like some of these expenses are a little bit silly for us to be picking up. Neil, do you want to jump in on that?
You pretty much covered it, you know, it's just between myself and. Chris York from MRB, which he's been pretty much right on top of things. I don't think the people in the office out in MRB. As much attention to things as they should. You know, that's, that's why we've got an inspector on the job. He can, he's gone back to emails and stuff and me and Rob and Chris York will get together. Go over those emails. And look at things before we make approval to go ahead with these change orders.
Trustees, any thoughts?
Just a, a quick question. I think each of the change orders was relatively small and dollar value.
Change order three is just under $8,000 and change order four is 2,500.
So I mean.
Now, change order four, we, we knew that we would be taking the auto dollar on for an additional two months. What I, I was a little bit frustrated about was the fact that they charged us to go and, you know. Pick it up and return it, which they were already going to be doing that anyway, so why are these additional costs and.
That was $300, wasn't it, Rob?
Yeah, yeah, a little 300 and change, but.
But I mean, they had, they had an explanation for it and I mean, I appreciate you and Neil being willing to do the due diligence and just. We're not arguing over, you know, tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars, but in principle, they should be accurate and correct. And I appreciate you guys doing it. Just I don't want you to burn too much time on it because the grand total that you're going to win is probably. You know, less than a thousand dollars or something. Just want you to spend your time wisely.
Now, you think we're good to jump into this one?
It's totally up to you guys on board. I just think. And me and Chris York have been talking, they are going to be coming out to the village with some other. Numbers and stuff for different things that are going on with that project and. They're just out to look, to get as much money out of this village as they can.
Like I said, I appreciate you spending the effort. I'm all, I fully support it. I'm not saying not to do it.
So, you know, I would, another month isn't going to hurt.
That's the case, I would entertain a motion to table the approval of change order three and then. A second motion to approve the tabling change order four. Do we need to do separate motions, Andy?
I have a question.
Andy, you're muted, we can't hear you. And then we'll take your question.
I will get used to that, but no, here if you identified both proposed change orders, you can do it in one motion.
Three and four.
All right, thank you, Ben. Kevin, before I take your question, we have the motion. Do I have a second? All right, thank you, Craig. Discussion, Kevin?
How long do we have before we sign off on all the construction projects from the sewer project?
Yeah, we still need to have all the work done and that we need to go over final documents, so we're still talking in like fall or later, right?
I'm guessing at least fall, yeah. Louise's part is pretty much, you know, they're going to be. Hopefully getting signed off here pretty soon. J square is going to be. I'm guessing late summer, early fall.
Kevin, are you talking specifically about the greenway?
Yeah, I think we talked about this last month about how they said they were going to leave it as good as, if not better. When they left it, it's certainly still not as good or even better. It, there's spots where they pulled up the fabric, there's spots where they put down material, which wasn't stone dust. And there's some spots where it's like a washboard compared to what it used to be.
Percent, Kevin, with that analysis.
I know there is one manhole we have to. Probably have them bring up a manhole extension to bring it up to grade. It is a washboard. But there is plenty of stone dust and stuff. And with us doing that north end. Improvement with parking and stuff for the greenway, my intentions are to. Because we're going to have probably trucks and equipment running over that greenway again, unfortunately. My intention says to take your great down there, get everything your great off again. And reroll it and hopefully that'll take care of all the waves and.
Yeah, but why should we be doing the work when they said they were going to be the ones that put it back the way it was?
Well, they, they have put more stone dust down. The fabric that I seen when I drive down through there is off the beaten path.
Well, I walked the other day and I, there's spots on the greenway itself where the fabric's sticking up. And there's a washboard effect as well. I mean, if they're going to tell us they're going to do, put it back the way it was, then it should be put back the way it was. I, I actually think they should even put down a layer of stone dust, maybe an inch or two to, to make it the way it was.
Well, I know it's definitely wider down through there.
Still not as good as it was.
Kevin, you got to remember, it's never going to be as good as it was because you have motorcycles and other utilities and stuff running down through there. You know, the only way you're going to make that a perfect thing is the black top.
Well, I, I don't get that because they did a great job on the black topping and that looks perfect. I don't know why they can't make the greenway look like it did before.
Maybe, maybe it's worth the three of us going down and walking it and talking about specific locations that need to be addressed if, if. Or Kevin, you could take a couple of pictures and send them our way and we'll see if that's something that falls under the purview, purview of the work they did. Versus normal wear and tear that may not have been them.
Yeah, I, I've been in contact with some of the people on the greenway and they're, they're not satisfied as well. It's not just me. I walked it just a couple of days ago and if, you know. To me, if they're, if they're saying it should be put back the way it was, then it should be put. And once we sign off, then they're off the hook and we have to end up paying for it.
All right, well, Neil and I will touch base and maybe we'll get a greenway person to walk with us. The only, I understand what both of you and I understand what Bobby's saying and that they said they'd put it back the way it was and then we'll, we'll make sure it goes back the way it was. I just also know that Louise has been super good and flexible about everything they've done.
Well, we've, we've also got pre-construction pictures of the way the greenway was. And I will dig them out as well, so we can stick them in a computer, compare what it is now compared to what it was and.
Great, we'll do that. We have the motion up to table. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of table, tabling change order three and four? Saw some thumbs up there. Andy opposed? Okay, moving on, we have already done the next piece of new business. We did that when Dave Engel was on. So we're moving over to the new highway garage project resolution. I gotta find that one. Denise or Ben or Andy, do you want to quickly summarize this here while I find the resolution?
Well, I'll give a quick, as, as much as I've reviewed this, this is in connection with the. Highway Garage and there was last July, a bond resolution adding an additional. Amount to the overall project budget to the overall bond resolution. And in that, while it was deemed to be a useful life of at least 15 years. The maturity date of the bonds was set forth at five years and what's in front of you now is a resolution to. Amend the bond resolution adopted. That would allow the term of the financing to be 15 years, not a five-year payback.
So in a sense, this is just changing.
It's just changing the term from five to 15 year repayment.
Think this is the one here. Denise, anything to add?
I'm pushing the right button here. No, that's correct. It's only the change in the terms from five years to 15 years. The monetary amount, it was up to $400,000. And we're only anticipating hopefully needing 300,000 and, you know, hopefully not even that, but we'll be on that safe side. To do 300,000, but it's a lot less burden on the taxpayers for 15-year payback rather than five.
Okay, I opened up the, the resolution, I think here, is this look right? Andy, Marie, Denise? This is a resolution amending a bond resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesick Falls, Rensselaer County, New York. In connection with the construction of a new highway garage in and for said village to extend the maximum maturity of bonds authorized to be issued beyond five years. So Andy, I'll start here at the resolved part, is that right?
That's right.
Resolved by the affirmative vote of not less than two thirds of the total voting strength of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesick Falls, Rensselaer County, New York as follows. Section one, the bond resolution set forth in the preamble is hereby amended to provide that the maximum maturity of the bonds therein. Authorized will be 15 years and will thus exceed five years with respect to the issuance of the bonds authorized therein. Section two, upon this resolution taking effect, the same shall be published in full in the official newspaper of said village for such purpose. Together with a notice of the village clerk and substantially the form provided in section 81.00 of local finance law and section three. This resolution is adopted subject to permissive referendum. Looking for someone to introduce the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, was that Ben? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call vote?
That's me.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Patton. Trustee Marpy.
Yes.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Do we get Craig in there?
Mayor Craig, no.
Yes. All right, thank you. Passes unanimously. Let me get back to this thing. We did all that stuff. Okay, wastewater treatment plant disinfection project now. You'll recall back when the, the quick history is there's a speedies permit requirement that we're going to have to have this. Added into our wastewater treatment plant by 2022. We went for the grant with MRB a while back. We switched and applied for the full grant with Delaware Engineering. We received the full million dollars. I went over this more with Robert Flores of Delaware Engineering and spoke with Andy and Denise today to get some more details on this. It's functioning a little bit differently than our previous grants because it's a WQIP. Water quality improvement, whatever the P stands for, I forget. Grant as opposed to the we grant that we've been operating on before. The, there is a required 25% match to this. And that, that's only specific to construction. The decision was made to go for a 1.5 million dollar project to maximize the million dollar. Grant from the state for the construction. That being said, we're still looking at over the next couple of years, having to. Budget for and, and, and take on approximately 500,000, 150,000 in terms of the design, the bidding and so on and so forth. And then the $250,000 match plus I think an additional 100,000 of extra construction costs. I spoke with Robert today on the phone a couple of different times after speaking with Andy, speaking with Denise. And thank you guys for your conversations there as well. I asked Robert if he could come to our next June meeting and present a little more in detail about what's going on. And that will also give Denise some time to look into the possibility of if we're going to have to bond, looking at some of the sewer. Fund balance that we have, which is actually one of our, our better fund balances and put together a plan to bring to you guys because. It's something we have to do. It's one of those things that is coming from the state, they're requiring us to do it and they're going to give us. Most of the money to do it, but we still have to come up with a lot of other money and we want to be able to present more of this to you next time. Andy, Denise, anything else you want to add or sound off on that?
No, I think you summarized it fine. It's really to allow the trustees. Open eyes as to what the project is, what the projected budget could be. So you know what you're getting into.
Yup. And Andy looked over the agreement and he had a couple of concerns which they brought up. I brought it to Robert and he was, he was good. He totally understood. But that being said, we still want to present this to you next month, so I can get you guys more details. I know everybody not named Craig loves to look over specs like this. But any thoughts, questions? Putting it off to the, agreeing to the agreement in June, assuming that's what we choose to do, doesn't affect the schedule of getting this done by 2022. As well, we confirmed that with Robert. So if, if that's all right with you guys, I still wanted this on the agenda, but I'm looking for a motion to table this.
That motion.
Thank you, Craig and Ben, for the discussion. All in favor of tabbing, tabling the motion, say aye. Opposed? Carries, thank you. Last chance for the public to speak up on the public hearing for local law number one. If you are there, please unmute your mic, introduce your name and address and speak your thoughts, please. All right, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Thank you, Ben. Second, Craig, further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Andy, what do we need to do next to fully adopt?
So in front of you is the introductory local law one, there would be a motion to approve introductory local law one. Of 2020 as local law one 2020 of the village. And if that motion is made and seconded, if you can do a roll call vote on the motion.
Thank you, Andy. Do I hear a so moved from the trustee somewhere?
So moved.
Thank you, Bobby. Second from Ben. This will be to adopt local law number one of 2020, right?
That's correct, local law number one of 2020.
All right, Marie, roll call vote, please.
Okay, we'll try this again. Mayor Allen. Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Louis, trustee. Trustee Marpy. Trusty O'Malley.
Yes.
Rusty Patton.
Yes.
And trusty pine.
Yes.
I didn't hear all the votes. It sounded like yeses or looked like yeses. Was that yeses from everybody, Marie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Great, now, excuse me, one second here. So we have on the agenda a couple possible hirings. As I mentioned earlier, we don't discuss personnel matters in open meeting. It's against the law. So I have set aside a meeting location for us to do an executive session. I will get that up and running shortly, trustees. And then we will join that meeting. So what I'm going to do for everyone else who is on this, and by the way, we're going to do it in Zoom, just in a different Zoom meeting with a different person along. And I'll tell you, trustees, when it's open is the trustees and Andy will leave this regular meeting and join the other one. And then we will go to that meeting. I will leave this up alive. So people who want to wait until the end, you can certainly do that. And when we're transitioning back, I will start a five-minute timer. So we know that that's going on. So please bear with me for just one minute, trustees, and I'll tell you when it's open. Any questions from anyone or any other business that we need to bring up?
Rob, do you need us to stay?
Um, no, I will not need you guys to stay. That's, uh, that's fine. It's just going to be. And if we have, if we have a police question, we know how to get in touch with Bob. Sorry, I had this up earlier and then something got in the way. So I'm getting this open right now.
Oh. You do need someone to make the motion to go in the executive session.
Thank you.
Motion.
There it is.
Ben, thank you. A second.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor to move into executive session?
Aye.
7:50.
Okay, Carrie's. Trustees, I should have the meeting open right now. So you should leave this meeting, check your email for the executive session invite. And then you'll use the email to get back into this meeting later. So trustees, you can head out. I'm going to mute my stuff here and leave this running.
Hey, girls. How are you?
Somebody talking?
Yeah, it's me.
Who's me?
We'll see.
Emily?
Nope, it's Deborah.
Deborah, hi Deb.
Hello. Wait, why is it? Oh, here I am. How are you guys?
Good. How are you?
Good. I'm good.
Surviving all this craziness?
Oh, yeah. I can't, I can't even imagine what it'd be like if I was still teaching, having to learn to teach this way. I know people are, but it's not the same with the person.
Yeah. Definitely a crazy time.
Yep. How are you guys doing?
We're good. Not good.
Yeah, right.
Crazy, but good.
Good.
So.
All right. How long you think they'll be out?
Hopefully not long, huh?
Yeah.
I think I'm going to sign off, but.
Did they do anything when they come out?
Yeah, they have to reopen the meeting if they're going to do any kind of activity.
Oh, okay.
Anything that they decide on has to be on an open meeting.
No.
Yep, that's the ropes. That's the ropes, Deb. You're going to learn them.
All right. Did I hear earlier that Ben retired today? He gave up?
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Oh, maybe I didn't hear that.
No, I didn't hear that.
I have imaginary friends, so.
Okay, I'll talk to you soon, Deb. I'm going to sign off here. Bye-bye, guys.
Stay safe.
If I can find the right button to get out of here anyway.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, Marie. Bye, guys.
See you later.
I don't know about you guys, but I'm ready for a nap.
I'm ready for something else.
I don't know why they have to do this in the middle of the meeting. I guess it's the end of the meeting. We're getting lucky.
Yeah, that's not bad. It's eight o'clock, so.
Yeah, as long as they don't get too chatty. There was a lot of chatting tonight.
Yeah. Well, I dug out my pictures for the pre-construction, so.
You did?
Oh, yeah. I got it. Right here.
Well, that's good.
Be nice if I had my computer and my telephone hooked up in my new garage.
It would be, wouldn't it?
You guys could have seen, you guys could have seen the beautiful sunset through my window.
Was there a nice sunset? Well, actually sitting.
Yeah, it was.
I can't see the sunset, but I can see the colors out across to the east. So I know that there was a nice sunset. Because I'm looking out my back window.
Yeah. No, it shines in the west window of my new garage. Just perfect, so.
Yeah.
It'll be shining right at my computer.
We will get you a computer one of these days. I think it's getting closer.
Well, I supposed to get a new computer for down here too as well, so. I'll actually have two computers, so.
Have you ordered one?
No. I'm going to let my favorite friend Denise order for me.
She likes that. Oh. Now let's dog out. I'll be back.
Okay.
All kinds of strange noises. You there, Neil?
I'm here.
Everybody else go home.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
It's just me and you.
Hanging around. I did get to look at the sky. It looks like it was a pretty sunset.
Yeah. You guys need to come down and visit. Check out the new pad.
Yeah, I haven't been down since you're actually in there. And did I hear that it got blacktop too?
Yeah, we got blacked out. We've got generators getting set Thursday, so. We're open for business.
Cool. We can be not social distancing. We'll have to have a party.
Well, I plan on doing an open house, but we got to wait till.
Yeah.
Oh, go on. Cuomo says we can do it.
Right. Yeah, that'll be nice. Definitely should have that. Might be a couple of months.
Hamburgers and hot dogs. You get to cook.
All right, I can do that. I can, I can flip hamburgers.
I think we're pretty well set. We've got a few eyeball things I got to get done, so.
Turned out the way you wanted to, I mean, relatively speaking.
Yeah, relatively, you know. We got company?
Someone's there, yeah.
Yep.
No, I'm talking. I'm still on. We're on a pause. I'm talking to Neil. We didn't, we didn't get invited to the big party. So they're an executive. We're just waiting for the executive to be over. So we can end the meeting. Call it a day.
Yep.
Yep. Been a long day.
Then it has. Now, we've got a little more blacktop and out between the building and the guardrails on the front of the building. Other than that, that's pretty much.
Yeah. John Street down that way looks good. They did a good job down there.
Yep. I think everybody's happy down there now.
Yeah.
I had a couple of people complaining and hopefully I took care of their issues. I haven't heard back from them, so.
No, well, we probably would hear from them. We know, we know we do when they're not happy.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's considering the mess that it was down there, I think it's 100% better down there, so.
And I know Trish is happy at the sandbar.
Oh, yeah, she couldn't thank me enough.
Yeah, good. Well, that's, I mean, the whole process for that area has been tough on them and the business and then everything, not being able to be open and turn up, trying to survive and keep their business going, so. They're doing the best they can. Okay, going to let the dog back in. Thought maybe they'd come back while I was gone. Oh. What'd I do?
I muted you, or I muted myself.
So how did we make different squares? Did you do that? Did I do something?
You must have done something. During a meeting, I could only see four people at a time. I just had to keep on sliding sideways.
Yeah.
Who I wanted to watch and listen to.
Right. I had everybody on the right. But now I don't have any choice. Everything's big, full squares. Oh, there you are. Hello.
No time. Technology.
Yeah, I know. I just kept hitting buttons. And Mark was doing a chat earlier and I didn't answer him. Now he's gone. I wasn't paying any attention. I think he thought I was asleep. I'm like, no, not asleep. Oh, here comes the countdown.
Oh, yeah, I see that. See, now the only picture I see is you and your little tiny person in the corner of my screen.
Yeah, now see, I don't see you at all. I just did side by side. Which is what, oh, there you are. You're back.
Yeah.
So they should all start popping in. Well, this should be quick. We just need to hire the officers and adjourn the meeting. Oh, and the records keeper.
I think the mayor wants to have a big meeting down here one of these times when we can social distance. Stop.
Sort of show or have the meeting there and show it off.
Yeah. That's what he's talking about, so.
Good idea.
Clean all the trucks and equipment out of the bays and I bet you we could fit, I'll have to ask Mark, see what we got for capacity for people being in here.
Yeah. Well, we never get that many in a meeting, but if you did, it sort of you might get more curious, you know, curiosity, people coming down to check it out. Which would be nice. Some people pay attention when it's boring.
Yeah, I've had a few people from the public stop in, like taking them for tours, so. They like it.
Good.
They say I can't retire, though.
No retiring. That's it. Not this year?
Nah. I could go this year, but.
Your wife's still in California?
Yeah, she's home due home the nineteenth. I gotta go pick her up.
She's enjoying her time.
Yeah. We find out the fifteenth, it's going to be a great boy or girl, so.
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Fun. One of my friends just told me today they were going to be grandparents. She's been waiting to see me to tell me in person. She said, I can't wait anymore. I had to tell you. So I don't know when I'm going to get to see her, so she told me today. One of these days, I'm hoping I get that phone call.
So I'll probably be in the in November, I'll probably be in California for yeah, two to three weeks.
That would be awesome. They're coming back. I see them. Two of them.
I still got the clock.
Yeah, I see Vanessa and Emily over on the side.
Hey, do you guys hear me at all?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, crap, I don't have audio again. Oh, jeez.
We're good, Rob.
We can hear you.
All right, I'll figure this out. Hold on one second. Uh the timer stopped. Everything is stopping. What's going on here?
We can hear you, Rob. Just run with it.
There you go. Go back to this. Why do I not have audio? Can you guys hear me fine?
Yeah. Yeah.
Hold on, I got a setting funny here.
How do you? How can you hear us say yes when you don't have audio?
No, I'm I'm watching people now, but now I hear you guys, so we're all good.
That was a trick question, Rob.
All right. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, and we're back. Um let the uh record show that we uh voted um with a motion from Ben seconded by Emily to uh leave executive session. Uh it was unanimously passed and we left executive session at eight fourteen uh and then waited for the mayor to figure out his volume control. Uh we are back. Um in the agenda, we had um we have uh we're looking for a motion to hire um Andy, do we need to do the officer separately?
Yes.
Okay, uh in that case, I'm looking for a motion to hire Crystal Quell as a part-time police officer uh effective immediately.
Motion.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Second.
And thank you, Bobby. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Carrie's and.
Obscene.
I'm sorry, and abstentions. Thank you, Lee, Emily. Emily and and younger one, high younger one. Uh also looking for a motion uh to hire Sean Markham uh to be a part-time police officer effective immediately.
Motion.
Thank you, Ben.
Second.
Second, Vanessa, all right? Uh any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Um we had uh we have discussed internally the need to hire a part-time records management clerk. This would be someone who can help us um organize our files upstairs and downstairs in the municipal building. We have um a great working operations within the village office, um but it is a large project that is going to take some very specific time and effort. So I am um I will be asking the board for permission to appoint a former trustee, Brian Buschner, to become our part-time records management um clerk. And the motion I'm looking for is to hire uh Brian Buschner uh as a part-time records management clerk for thirteen dollars an hour at a maximum of fifteen hours a week.
Motion.
That was like everybody. I think it was Vanessa. And then.
The second.
And then we'll give Craig the second because he said that that's perfect. Any further discussion on this? Um this would Andy, would this being as an effective immediately thing, or should we set a a start date to um next week?
Up to the board's discretion.
Why wait?
You want, Rob?
Well, we'll do it effective immediately and we'll we'll start when he has availability. How does that sound?
Great.
Okay, great.
I'm spying.
All right, in that case, uh unless there's other discussion, um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I opposed? All right, Carrie's. Um I think that is it unless anybody else has any business to bring forward. All right, in that case, Ben?
Motion.
Well, motion to what, Ben? You have to be specific.
Go to go to sleep. Motion to end the meeting.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much for coming uh for spending your evening hours with us. Uh and thank you trustees and Andy for your patience in letting me figure out how to host two meetings simultaneously uh for our executive session. Always a pleasure. Good night, all. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.